You think the executive session will be a lengthy one?
All right, call the City of Clear Lake Shore, City Council regular meeting January third, two thousand and twenty-three, at six thirty P M to order. Item, or we have a full quorum, all council members are present. Item two, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Texas flag. All right, item number three, reports from council, councilman Steve Wordes.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wordes, councilman Rick Fisher.
Yes, I say, hope everybody had a great Christmas and a good New Year. Hope God nobody else got stuck out there in the middle of the debacle that happened last week, flying around. Wasn't my fault, I was on vacation. Parks and Pool Committee is not going to have a meeting this month. They're probably going to meet in February, if we're going to try and discuss a few things, one of them about getting the new gate code entry system for the pool and for possibly City Hall and getting something worked out with that. But other than that, nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, councilwoman Monica Lade.
Aside from to say, hope everybody had a great New Years, nope, nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Lade, councilman Alex Scanlon.
Roads and Drainage met last week, it was a good meeting, it was well attended, so it was good to see some faces out. I guess putting addresses on the agenda will do that, get the homeowners out. Brant was there, it was nice having you there, Brant, appreciate it. Seems like Brant has some good experience doing similar projects or similar scale projects in his other employments, so I think that's going to be beneficial to us in the short term. So looking forward to that. And then I'll just say, I'm pretty frustrated with the budget process over the last three or four months, and I'm, you know, trying to make sense of it. You know, I found, I asked my fellow council members to look at the current budget and look at what we approved and see if you find any discrepancies. I know specifically the one item that we motioned to change in September was not changed in the current budget. It's, I don't know if anything else in there is incorrect, but I encourage you to look at it and double check and see, make sure you're happy with it. I'll be bringing that back to council at the next opportunity I get, really discovered it pretty recently, so I'm not totally up to speed.
Thank you, councilman Scanlon, councilman Randy Cronister.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cronister. Just a couple of things for myself, with the KEMA, Clear Lake Shore's volunteer fire department, just put our prayers out for Steve Rutherford, he's lost his wife, Rebecca, she was part of that fire department for over twenty years, and so they had complications and surgery and she passed away unfortunately. And then also, just to let you know that it looks like fire fees will probably be going up to about nine dollars and fifty cents, and that's to handle the current operations budget within the E S B, that's controlled, you know, E S B controls for the fire department. And hopefully to put away, to continue to putting away a rainy day fund of around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the fire department, so if anything happens there, they've got something similar to what we have in Clear Lake Shore. And other than that, everyone hopefully had a happy New Year and a good holiday over the time and meeting with all their family. Next is item four, staff reports, police department interim chief David Donaldson.
Mayor, council, traffic contacts for the month of December was a hundred and eight, driving while intoxicated was one, narcotic offenses, we had six, accidents, four, one assault, three thefts. And arrests and warrants together, we've arrested sixteen individuals. Assist other agency, four, residential checks, one hundred, business checks, five thirty-six. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. City administrator, city administrator, Brant Gary.
Thank you, mayor, good evening, mayor, members of city council, members of staff and the public, happy New Year as well. Not a lot to report since the last meeting, obviously had a few holidays thrown in there. However, one item that I was not able to get information for, last time I did get information for today, and so I'll pass that along, and it is concerning the boat ramp project that's out there. And that project, construction of a new boat ramp, and it's going to extend the ramp by about twenty feet. It'll remove some of the unusable timber pier, construct two new piers, and it'll also have LED solar lighting on it. And that project, construction of a new boat ramp, and it's going to extend the ramp by about twenty feet. It'll remove some of the unusable timber pier, um, to construct two new piers, and it'll also have L E D solar lighting on it. The U S Army Corps of Engineers has approved the project, and so we do have a, an approval letter from them. What we're waiting on now is the Texas General Land Office. As soon as the G L, G L O approves the lease, um, we should be ready to go to bid. As of now, the plans are about ninety-five percent complete, according to the project engineer. I think the only thing that they're still working on is getting the L E D solar lighting included in the plans. They estimate probably about thirty days to advertise once we do go out, and work schedule, they estimate about ninety days. Obviously, that's going to depend on weather and conditions and whatnot, but I did want to pass that information along since I wasn't able to provide that last time. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
So you're saying once they start, it's ninety days till they complete that project?
That's their estimate.
I agree also.
They're saying that, yeah, entire work schedule, ninety days. That seems optimistic, but, um, we'll take it.
That seems good. We've been waiting a while, so that's good news.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Brant. Item number five, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council. If the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comments may be made now or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from the public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. Anybody like to speak from the public? Having none, public comments is closed. Item number six, anybody or any city council want to pull a item from consent, agenda consisting of A and B?
I'd like to pull item A.
Pulling item A. Does anybody have an objection to approving consent agenda with item B only? Having none, consent agenda is accepted with item B only. Under new business, item seven, we'll take care of. Item A, check register twelve fifteen, twenty-two through twelve twenty-eight, twenty-two.
I'm not following you.
Oh? You said you wanted it pulled, so I pulled it.
Oh, okay.
So, so now it's in new business. Item A, check register twelve fifteen, twenty-two through twelve twenty-eight, twenty-two. So I would assume you were going to make a motion or discussion for, something for discussion about it.
Yeah, I'd like to motion to, I guess, discuss the item, uh, there's a fifty thousand dollar check written for line item on the budget, one one nine, five ninety-six, I believe. Um, but I, I think that needs to be pulled off the check register.
Need a second too. All right. Motion by, second by Mr. Cronister. Discussion?
Um, this line item was written against budget, budget line one one nine, five nine six, which was prior to the amendment to the motion on the nine twenty meeting was thirty-five thousand, and the, uh, motion in the nine twenty meeting was to reduce that to twenty-five thousand, so that didn't get amended in the budget when the final one was published. And additionally, that line on this check register, that check is written in excess of the budgeted amount, which is, I believe, problematic. And then the check was written, it, my understa, I'm not exactly sure what it was written for, but it doesn't seem like a general improvement, which is what the line, it's allotted for in the budget is. So there's just a whole lot of things going on with it that seem incorrect, so I wanted to pull it off the consent agenda.
Yeah, so that item has been identified, and it is coming out of E D C funds. It's for the payment of the property, um, up on six fourteen, uh, F M twenty ninety-four. So we need to amend that. A recommendation is to amend that report and bring it back next time.
So if that's coming from E D C funds, why did we write the check?
That's because it came out of general funds.
Right, but we.
That's, should be out of E D C funds, not our general funds.
You are, you are absolutely correct. It was a mistake.
Okay, so who wrote the check?
The finance person, Cheryl Hunter.
So it was a fifty thousand dollar check that was written out of city funds. Uh, there's not a specific line item on it. There was not a budget amendment for that. There was never a meeting to get approval for that. And if I'm reading this ordinance correctly, maximum that can be written without an account approval, like, that's ten thousand dollars. That's forty thousand dollars over.
But the council approved the fifty thousand dollars for E D C.
We approved E D C to purchase the property at a meeting. It was, I believe, prior to the nine twenty meeting, but we never, those E D C funds, the funds that were used to write this check, which were in excess of the budgeted amount for that line item for a different purpose, weren't E D C funds either. So that's, that's really three missteps there in the check. It was, I assume, signed by our city administrator?
No, it's never been signed. It's, it's never been cash because the check has not been used yet.
But it was, it was on the check register, so it was, I mean, it was ready to go unless we caught this today. So it had to have been signed.
Well, well, that's incorrect. There's a new check that's written through E D C.
Which was writ, which was written today?
I don't know, but.
I, I think you know.
Yeah?
I, I think we know. I, I think we know the check was written today.
Okay.
I gue, I guess it's a mystery. We just write fifty thousand dollar checks in the City of Clear Lake Shores, and nobody knows who signs them or when they were written.
No, that's incorrect, but.
Can you fill us in then?
It was, the check was cottoned, so it was been removed, and now it's underneath E D C. There was a question whether it goes underneath E D C or has to come out of general fund. With property being purchased from E D C, there's rules.
All right, I think the question Rick was asking, and I'd, I'd like to ask it too, is who, who wrote the check for fifty thousand dollars and out of the general fund?
Who approved writing that check? Huh?
Who approved writing that check?
Who signed the check?
It was requested by me to write the check.
But again, that was approved to go through E D C, not through the general fund of the city.
That was a question whether it came from E D C or general funds. Sometimes we transfer E D C funds into general fund to pay for that property. So that was getting clarified.
Okay, well, there was something in here about a transfer from a, uh, E D C fund to our general fund. All I see in there is a check being written.
Is there no procedure for, uh, do, going through some type of approval or any documentation showing that that's the plan? I just, I, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, they do electronic transfer, but I don't know if Brant was involved at all.
I'm not familiar with the specifics, but it sounds like the check was, uh, written to the, or from the wrong account, and, uh, so that check needs to be voided and a new check issued. Um, if that's the case, then, uh, you know, we certainly can make sure that happens.
My understanding is that's already happened, correct? That happened, that happened this afternoon.
Okay, so I think it would certainly be appropriate if, um, you know, consistent with the spirit of the motion to, um, perhaps provide, uh, um, just the documentation for that to council if council desires. We can certainly do that. Um, I can't speak to, uh, the specifics of what happened, um, with the budget, but if it is correct that it was budgeted for and approved into the E D C fund, then we can certainly provide the documentation, uh, for the two checks.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to resolve this and bring the check register report back at the next meeting. I'd also ask Brant that you, um, maybe help us understand how this process is, is supposed to work as far as when funds are being transferred with a check written against the budget for a line item that's not what they're actually for, and that the plan is to bring money in from somewhere else to make up for them later. Or, I, I mean, it, it sounds confusing. It sounds like I'm rambling, but that's because it doesn't make any sense to me either.
I'll admit, I'm not fully aware of, uh, the ins and outs, but, uh, we can certainly get that information and provide it to council.
That would be appreciated.
So it seems like before the check was even written, there should have been an approval, listening to this. There should have been an approval from council to write a check for that amount of money.
There was, there was a purchase agreement that we entered to, into with Derek Ruffany, and that was part of the initial purchase with the title company, and we just paid fifty thousand dollar upfront, and that's what that check was for. Because we thought we were going to close on that property, and so we risked it, we issued a check to pay, to close on the property, and then the title work didn't get all worked out, so the check has just been holding.
Right, I did, I did see the email that you copied me on, and I, I remember approving that purchase for the E D C. I made the motion, but I guess I'm confused like them. Uh, does the E D C not have their own checkbook? So why wasn't the check written from there to begin with? And if not, and we were going to pay it from a different account, it seems like that should have been approved by council for that amount of money. I, I understand what you're asking. So we shouldn't be doing that. We shouldn't be writing checks for that amount of money without approval first. I think that's the whole point, right?
Regardless of whether or not it's going to be paid back.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Sounds kind of fishy, really. I mean, why are we writing that check for fifty thousand dollars? Isn't there a limit that we can, we can spend without council's approval for that anyway?
Absolutely.
And why wasn't it coming out of that account to begin with? That is confusing.
Yep, so we can look into it and bring it back.
So we don't have a proper protocol in place to prevent something like this from happening again? Or was protocol violated?
I do not know, and the finance person would be the one to know about that.
It's not unusual sometimes for the city to write a check and then E D C to reimburse.
Reimburse that account.
That's pretty common. That's the way it's been in the past sometimes. It just depends. I don't know whose name, who, who's going to hold the property, who's going to be clause ten, you know, who's going to hold it. That has anything to do with it or not, so there may be two or three moving parts to it. You've got clause ten oh six, you've got E D C, and you've got the city. Nothing wrong with the city writing the check because it's been approved. I see the way I'm hearing it. And then E D C, it's just, it's just a transfer, actually electronic transfer, a check to replace that money, so it's, you know, it just has to, all those steps have to be followed, and then, and whatever check signing requirements are for the checks. I don't, I think it's over ten thousand, I think it's two, three signatures, or is that, I don't know.
No, they're all signed by the city. If it's a ten thousand dollars, if it's budgeted, if it's an approved item in the budget, you can write up to ten thousand dollars without council approval. Above ten thousand dollars, you've got to have approval. And so, I mean, regardless if it's going to be paid back or not, I don't care if it's been done like that in the past. If there's going to be a check written for fifty thousand dollars, it needs to get approved. It needs to go through the proper channels. I mean, that just sounds very shady and underhanded doing it this way.
Right, so.
E D C approved it, and then y'all approved us, so it hasn't approved.
No, that hasn't been approved through the city. Those are proof for E D C to pay for, not for the city. The check should not.
Right, so the E D C was approved, the city had written the check, and I think the intent was to be reimbursed. And that's what we've done in the past.
So writing fifty thousand dollar check like that without approval or, you know.
I'm just going off of what we've done in the past with other similar type properties.
So we can write a check out of, against any line item in the budget, regardless if it's relevant or not, with the non-documented promise to pay it back from another entity and hope that someone does it? This, is that what I'm hearing? That's how we've done it?
No, that's, no, the, it was approved both the E D C and the, and the city budget, or city, uh, council meeting to write the check.
It was approved from the E D C to write the check. It was not approved to the county for the city to write the check.
Okay, we can agree to disagree. Any case.
Who signed the check?
I was one signature.
Does it require one signature or two?
It requires two.
Two, okay.
Do I need to re-amend my motion?
No, your amended motion, I believe, is to resolve the incorrect check that was written and to bring back to council what the proper, um, the account should be, and then that the check should go against the E D C. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I need a second.
One second.
Motion by, Mr. Scanlon, seconded by Mr. Cronister. Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, I. Any opposed? Nay. Having none, motion passes. Uh, additional new business, executive session. A governmental body may conduct an executive session to discuss matters dealing with individual officers or employees. Specifically, this exception allows governmental bodies to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.